I'd like to welcome everyone to our April 13th, 2023 briefing. This is for the meeting, the regular meeting, next Thursday on April the 20th. Today, we have no discussion items, so as, and the county manager will review our agenda in a minute, and we do have closed session this afternoon. So I think we're ready to go. Mr. County Manager, we'll start with Chris.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Board members and staff and guests. So we'll go ahead and dive into our agenda and finalize this for April 20th meeting. Chris Murphy's up first with a public hearing in consideration of a special use permit. It's zoning docket F-15, 1627.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the county commissioners. I'm really not going to go over this presentation. We did have the public hearing last time. If you remember, the public hearing was continued based on some folks who stood up in opposition, this being a quasi judicial hearing. The hearing was held open, and it was requested that the property owner, Mr. Lawson, and/or his representative, which was the project engineer, meet with the neighbors. I don't know the exact outcome. I do know that the project engineer did meet with the loose's yesterday on site, both their property and on the subject property. I don't have any other information beyond that, but we will, since the public hearing was held open, we'll have, we'll have the ability to have additional testimony next Thursday, and then ultimately, if the county commissioners decide, make a decision. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I just, only maybe a week ago or something, the one person said that they, they didn't know about that, and I don't know why it didn't. I thought it was about a week ago, two weeks, about two weeks after we were talking about. You did send letters out?
We did not. The county clerk did, because the item that was before the planning board, it was not a rezoning. As a special use, as a special use permit, the, the planning board considered the site plan, then whenever it comes to this body is when it's a quasi judicial. We can't have a public hearing at the planning board and here, because there would be testimony that the commissioners would not have heard. So there was no notice of the planning board meeting, but the, but the clerk did send out the notices per the notice requirements in the statute for the hearing that we held two weeks ago.
The same distances?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That one, well, that particular one, wonder if it would have been outside of one of...
The folks that spoke here both got notices. The, the folks that were here last time, they did get the notice, again, but they got it the Saturday before that Thursday meeting, but again, by the time you put it in the mail and it gets to them, you have to mail it no earlier than 25 days before the hearing, and no later than 10 days before the hearing. So whenever it was mailed, they probably got it four or five, five or six days before the meeting. Any other questions?
We're good.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chris. All right. Item two and three are obviously related. They are public hearings on the four bond orders entitled bond order authorizing the issuance of not exceed $22,000, $1,920,000 general obligation bonds. I'm not going to read through all that. I'm just going to turn it over to Lee Plunkett to tell us sort of what we're going to do and structure of what's going to happen next Thursday.
Sure. I'll pull up the presentation you all are familiar with. So, you know, all of the board actions, submissions, publications that you contemplated in the last meeting on March 30th have been approved or completed. And so next Thursday, there'll be a public hearing on the four bond orders, and those are all tied to the two-thirds general obligation bonds. And the public hearing allows for anyone who wishes to be heard on the questions of validity and then also advisability of the bonds. So then after the meeting, you will then take the bond orders and contemplate those for approval, as well as approval of the bond resolution. So the, the four bond orders are the 22.92 for schools, 2.3 for Forsyth Tech, two for Parks and Rec, and two million for just general county capital maintenance. The primary purposes of the bond orders that you would be approving are authorizing the actual issuance of the bonds, so including the amount and the purpose, which we just talked about, as stating that the security that is being provided for the bonds is your taxing authority, and then defining when the orders will take effect after the publication. So a day after the 20th and the 21st is, the clerk will publish those, and then 30 days later, they'll become effective, and that way that we can sell the bonds at that point. And then, do you want me to go ahead and hit the bond resolution now, or?
Yeah, that'd, that'd be great. And also talk a little bit about the, what's working in the background around the local government commission and their meeting and approval and all that.
Yeah, I'll hit that for sure. So the, the bond resolution is the, is the final approval for, for you as the board before the LGC sells the bonds for the county. It's, it's long, but it essentially lays out all the detail needed to legally sell them. So just as an example, it defines, you know, their amounts, type and purpose, shows what the, the two-thirds total will be, which is the 29.22 million. And then as a reminder, this is the only action that you as the board will take regarding the 2016 referendum bonds. So those have already been approved. This is just a matter of you saying, yes, you can sell these bonds at this date. And like we've talked about in the funding plan, the par amount was $100 million, and that was the max amount that we could issue based off our modeling without a tax rate impact. But you all have allowed us to increase that amount in the bond resolution to 105 million, just in case the market takes a turn for the better, and we're allowed to issue a little bit more than what we have modeled out. It does not, will not ever impact the tax rate, it's just a matter of getting a little bit of extra flexibility. It also states, you know, when the, when the debt will become due, when we're going to make payments, all the, all the details, transactional details needed for the LGC to sell the bonds for us. In the final piece, it does repeal some lingering authorized but unissued refunding bonds that we will never issue. They were from 2020 and 2021, so it just gets us off the books, so we don't have that anymore. And then allows the county manager and the CFO to execute any documentations to facilitate the sale and the closing. And this is just the, the plan that we have in place. Again, you all have seen this before, it's nothing new. And then to Dudley's question, last, last Thursday on the 30th, we did submit our application to sell the two-thirds bonds to the LGC. And so the actual LGC meeting will take place May 2nd. And so we just got an email right before we walked in that this, we're still waiting on confirmation that this will be on the consent agenda, but normally our, our bonds are, we are, you guys have done a great job with all of our policies and AAA rating most of the time, so they'll put it on the consent agenda, so it'll be a pretty quick process. And then May 23rd, we're going to price and sell the bonds, and then June 13th and 14th is when we'll actually receive the bonds. We are working with the schools to pull together a list of those projects and narrow it down to what will be needed by the LGC, and we have a deadline of May 9th for that, so we'll be working closely with them to get those, those projects in. Any questions?
Questions for Lee.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Lee. All right. So that's the public, well, we've got a couple of other matters with, involving sort of resolutions, recognizing April 2023 is Public Health Month in Forsyth County, North Carolina, so there'll be folks present from public health to receive that. And then finally, Chris has a, a resolution designating new review officers to review and certify maps and plaits with Forsyth County, North Carolina, so y'all do have to approve the folks who are designated to, to be able to do that. So, got the minutes, which will be...
I'm going to get those out tomorrow.
Tomorrow, so be looking for those. And so now we've got the regular business items on the agenda. Item seven is a resolution ratifying and authorizing the execution of interlocal agreements with Rural Hall, Tobacco Ville, Walker Town, and, and then amendment to the budget. I'll turn it over to Kyle to review this. This will sound familiar to you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. As you, as you'll recall, the county was allocated $700,000 from the state budget last year, and the funds were not earmarked specifically in the legislation, but we were granted permission to use 100,000 of that $700,000 for the development of Blues, Blues Lake Park, and then the other $600,000 was to be distributed in equal amounts of $200,000 to Rural Hall, Tobacco Ville, and Walker Town. And so this item is appropriating the $600,000, because we've already done the $100,000 that we're using for the Blues Lake project. And then, so it's appropriating this $600,000 for those three towns, and it's also approving the interlocal agreement so that, again, so that those funds can be passed through to them as they complete their projects that they're going to be using for, with this money. Happy to answer any questions.
Do you want to mention the projects, Kyle?
Sure.
Because we went through a little bit to try to assure that the projects that the towns proposed matched up with what Senator Kravik kind of had in her mind around appropriate use of these dollars, and so that took a little bit.
It did. And so Rural Hall is going to be using their $200,000. It's really for some design and pre-construction work for a new fire station in Rural Hall, I believe is what it was. And in Tobacco Ville and Walker Town, Tobacco Ville, it was a, you know, part of a, a larger park project that they're going to be using. There it is, I was looking for my, Town of Walker Town, Town Center Park, it's a community meeting facility is what they're going to use their funds for. Then Tobacco Ville was, again, like I said, a much larger kind of park project they've had planned, and they're going to be, again, using those funds as, as matching funds for a part of grant, I believe, that they've received.
If I may?
Sure.
Go ahead.
It, it looks like Appendix A has, down in the fine, fine print, a little bit of laundry list for Tobacco Ville, a trail system, a disc golf course, picnic shelter, and amphitheater, and a sand volleyball court. Are those the right ones?
That's it, yes. And so again, I mean, they're not going to use this money for all of those projects. It's, it's really, those are, that is a, a much larger project that they've had kind of in the pipeline, and so this work will go towards that, those projects.
That collection, right. It says bid package one, bid package two, et cetera. Looks like it's alternative language, how much can they get for the bucks they have.
And I think they were matching it up with a Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant and some other resources. If you're familiar with that, they were, they were able to acquire a piece of property that's kind of back up off of, it's a paint hour mill. You know, if you go, if you, if you know where their park is, it's, it's actually on the road that kind of backs up to that, but, but it connects to, it is contiguous to their existing parks, so.
And it's, it's the one that's the most complicated to explain if somebody asks me, what are you, what are you, what's this money going to do? But it's, it's pretty clear that it's for this project, potentially including those things.
That's right. And it really, these funds are really to be distributed to these, these, these towns and municipalities, you know, at their, not necessarily discretion, because the, the, again, the, the state office has to approve it, and they, they've seen these projects, and they've said okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and I want to thank Kyle, because he's serving as a grant administrator for the state of North Carolina in this, because we do have some grant administration requirements, because the money did come to us, and so I appreciate Kyle doing that extra work, so. We have some grant, or a grant item. You've got, item eight is a resolution authorizing submission of an application of awarded acceptance for a Clean Air Grant from United States Environmental Protection Agency, Marner Barnett.
Good afternoon. It's good to see everyone. Today is not the first time that I've come to you seeking consideration for us to pursue federal funding to support some of the projects to benefit on what we're doing here in the county, and hopefully today will not be the last time that I come with a similar request. So this federal funding is available through the Inflation Reduction Act, and is being administered and distributed by the Environmental Protection Agency. They're calling it a Clean Air Act grant program, and it requires no local matching. And I think that it's, appears to me that EPA staff are going to have some reasonably broad discretion on the types of projects that they can approve. So we've confirmed that we are an eligible recipient of these funds, and I think that the projects that we're planning to invest in are qualifying projects to be approved under this grant program. We'll find out soon. I would like to mention that this has been a very dynamic and changing environment that we've been communicating in, and the information has changed regularly, and I got some information this morning that was different than information I got on Tuesday, and that information was different than the information I based this agenda item on when I was drafting it three weeks ago. And I'll mention to, I want to bring to your attention, I've shared with Ashley and Gordon and county manager, that when I submitted this into the system for approval 15 minutes before the deadline, three Fridays ago, it had an error in it that I just caught at 1:30 today, and I've brought that to their attention, and we will correct that error. It's a, I hope it's a typographical error, but honestly, it might be a mathematical error, which I would be more embarrassed about, but I wanted to bring that to your attention, and we'll fix that before next Thursday.
I appreciate your work on it, Marner. You've been able to take advantage of some federal dollars, and these are good replacement equipments and...
You know, there's, there's a lot more for us to dig into and look for.
Certainly, certainly safer and be able to monitor our work better, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marner. All right. Very good. Have some contracts. Item nine is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement between Forsyth County and Professional Software for Nurses Incorporated for software licenses. Nicole Priddy.
Good afternoon, commissioners. The item before you is a resolution to enter into a contract with professional nursing software for an electronic student health record management software program called SNAP. The contract is not to exceed $55,450 and is paid for entirely through funding made available to Forsyth County from North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. The software program will allow our school nurses to manage and maintain electronic health records of students and to provide more effective school health nursing services. I have with me today the School Health Program Supervisor, Brooke Hamby, and she and I are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Appreciate you doing that, make it a little more, I assume it improves the efficiency and probably speed, and we're handling, we don't handle that, and helps schools a lot.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
All right. Item 10 is a resolution approving the renewal of Laserfish Document Management Subscription Services from MIS and Joseph Sloop, although Gary Koontz is on my list, but I presume you're going to fill in for, for Gary.
Sorry you got me today.
No, that's good.
So what you have before you today is our countywide document management solution. So that's the solution we use when we scan in documents to be able to archive and then research them and bring them back. It's the annual renewal. We went ahead and got a couple of other bids with it, just to show that we still are after the lowest bid for this solution. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Appreciate your pursuit of to see if there's something else out there for the distribution, for that, that, those, that document screening tool.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Joseph. All right. Kirby has two items, item 11 and 12, both deal with the purchase of new tires, so.
Stuck in the chair.
Kirby is stuck in the chair. That is the first time that has happened in this room, I think, so.
The county manager, that happened to me once about a year and a half ago.
Okay, there you go.
Chair tried to eek on my jacket, I had to touch it.
That's exactly what just happened. It's very embarrassing.
Well, you got your General Services guy, he's got to fix the chair, so fix that.
We'll look at that tonight, yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board, I'm sorry. I appreciate the opportunity to bring this item to you today. It's sort of a nuts and bolts business item for us. As background, General Services is responsible for maintaining the county's motor fleet on an uninterrupted basis. Right now, we've got about a 700 vehicle fleet, and as you can imagine, we drive quite a few miles, and that burns up quite a few tires during the year. Right now, we spend roughly $230,000 or so a year on tires, and over the past several years, we have used North Carolina State Contract to purchase those tires, and really have found it to be competitive with a wide selection of prices. That's not always the case with state contract, but in this case, we, we find that it is. So this item requests permission to continue using that state contract and to make purchases up to $120,000 with two vendors that are authorized under that contract. Last year is one vendor. You know, with the way that the commodity market is now, we need to have a little flexibility to be able to order from one if the other can't fulfill that order. Because it's North Carolina State Contract, the prices are fixed across the vendors, so we wouldn't be buying at different prices. So B Roth, if they provide a certain type of tire, it's the same price as Parish Tire. But we do buy different brands from those providers. Our Pursuit tires come from one vendor, our non-emergency tires come from the other. So this contract, if for your consideration, is proposed through fiscal 25. That's really subject to if the state contract remains active. Each year, it's ready to expire and the state renews it. It's actually been in place since 2015. It's set to expire this May. We're pretty sure they're going to extend it again. So it's, again, those prices continue to carry forward. Eventually, they will discontinue it, because some of the tires are being discontinued in those lines. But that's sort of how state contract goes sometimes. So in summary, this item authorizes annual purchases up to $120,000 with both B Roth and Parish Tire under the terms of North Carolina State Contract number 863A through fiscal 25. Happy to answer any questions the board has.
I appreciate you answering the one question I had, which was why we're working with, why did we want to have contracts with both vendors, both different brands? I got it.
Yes, sir. We, we, actually, last year was just with B Roth, and we switched our Pursuit tire, I think, because sometimes the Firestone was either unavailable or a little more expensive. Right now, we're dealing, dealing with Goodyear, and that's caused us to split some of our purchases happily.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions for Kirby?
Thank you.
Thank you, Kirby. All right. You have two tax administration items, a resolution approving refunds by the Tax Assessor collecting the amount of $1,027.28 and $1,403.25 from the Board of Equalization and Review. Got reports, a February 2023 contribution-based benefit cap report. And then we do have two items that we have added. So, Mr. Chairman, I, you know, what we have done in the past, if you read the policy specifically, it says that the board will actually take action to add items to the agenda, which you would do next week. You can do that just by consensus, however you want us to handle that. But we did have two items that were added. I think both of them make a ton of sense. Item 16 is a resolution approving a revision to the 2023 Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Funding Plan. After all the discussion we've had about how to maximize that funding, I think we've been super, kind of hyper aware that we need to make sure and do that. So we did have this one coming in, obviously, we got year in. Michaela Westbrook is going to come up and talk just a little bit about what this revision looks like, and it really is a function, I think, of JCPC, really monitoring the, the applicants and the awardees really carefully to make sure we're doing it safe.
Good afternoon, everybody. So this is a resolution to take $35,726 that was returned from two programs and to reallocate them for other programs to use. It'll be five programs that are receiving funds to do additional projects, and one program does include an additional cash match of $5,353 from Forsyth County to be used from our gun and gang violence funds that have been budgeted in the reserve. And I'll answer any questions if there are any.
When I looked at the chart that was at the end of that attachment, it would have probably been helpful to just show each one of the, because I assume the chart that we saw included the changes.
Correct.
It would have been helpful to see the, the, sort of the debit and credit, sort of the takeaway and the add-on, and if there was new agencies, I mean, that new, you know, it would have just been clear about, because it, it would have reflected the changes from the original approval on the same form.
Okay.
And I think that could have been helpful to just, because when I, when I looked at that, I said, I... at that, I said, I actually had to go back and say, oh, this was on the chart, so was it a part of the, well, yeah, this is one of the new add-on agencies and what they're getting. That, I mean, it would have just been a more user-friendly chart to track changes. And I take it that this is a change from the process, the way we've been doing business, so that we're capturing this sooner and getting the dollars reallocated to reuse. Because I don't remember us doing that before.
We do this almost every year. The problem is that even with these changes, there may be organizations such as the one that do the home and the psychological assessments, that even though they're not returning money, we may end up still having to revert to the state at the end. But we do do this every year.
I understand that.
In the chart that's in there, just so you know, that is a state form, but certainly next time, Ms. Westbrook can kind of add our own spreadsheet just so you can see the difference. So we will take note of that.
Well, my memory before, which can clearly be incorrect, qualify that, was that essentially we rarely had time to do some reallocations. I know we've done real, I mean, I just, maybe you're bringing it to us to show us the reallocation, but no, I see you're shaking your head. So, but I just don't remember, I don't remember those kind of, we have $35,000 left over, and this is what we did, we divided to the, the couple of different ones, these guys did this, and these guys, I just don't remember that before. I know you told us.
Right. We do typically do it, but it is, the problem has been that it is much earlier than June 30th, right? So today's April 13th.
Yes.
It's going to get approved at the next meeting, and so there's kind of this time lag of two months that you're still kind of trying to figure out, you know, is it going to completely balance at the end?
I understand that.
But we do do this process when programs have dollars that they think they're going to revert.
And you always did it a couple months before?
This is because of the state's timing. The state has to have this by May 1st of each year.
So you're doing nothing any different?
That is correct.
Okay. So we don't have a process improvement to make it better, it's just we hope this will make it better.
Well, really, you know, I think what us, what we need to advocate truly is for the state to change their date. I feel like we would get to a much better place in terms of reversions and balancing if the state would push back their date beyond the May 1st date. That would certainly be an action for us to see if that would be possible.
Okay, thanks.
Chairman, if I may, I wanted to tell Ms. Westbrook, thank you, thank you, thank you, and I say it three times, because I hate to see monies going back, knowing the issues that transpire in our community. So I appreciate you finding in the, or the department finding ways to support others in this capacity, so thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
This is probably a stupid technical question, but in the list of projects, one of them is Children's Center of Surrey, Inc. They have a facility located in Forsyth County.
The Surrey County? No, this is a particular group home that takes the highest-risk individuals, and they are located in Surrey County.
Okay, so, but, you know, we have folks from Forsyth being housed at...
Absolutely, yes, sir.
That's, thank you, thank you. Nothing against, you know, good money going to the good folks of Surrey County.
Understand, we do try local, but unfortunately, we don't have enough facilities.
Thank you.
Very good. And then the other added item is item 17, which is just a resolution recognizing April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and folks from DSS will be here to receive that as well next Thursday. So, Mr. Chairman, it's a little more straightforward day, so... Amazing. It is amazing. The only other item I have that I just wanted to mention is we do, not next Thursday, but two weeks from today, we'll be in one of our morning, bi-monthly morning sessions, and, you know, that is a time where we hear some presentations and just gather information and have a little more time, and we don't bog down the meeting. And so you've got a roughed agenda of where we are. Basically, what we've got so far is sort of the regular periodic updates from the schools, Forsyth Tech, partners, planning does theirs. Does that sound right, Chris? You're shaking your head, kind of. We did one, we did one, I guess, two months ago, so anyway, we'll see where that is. ARPA update, which we tried to do periodically in these sessions. And then really, the meat of this one is, I thought it would make some sense, particularly as we're heading into budget, we've got a lot of capital projects underway and have General Services come in and really review those projects, where we are with them. Some of them are very visible, like the courthouse, the airport terminal, airport improvements out there. But we've also got some others that are not as visible to you and kind of let you know where we are with those. And so we'll spend some time. And then frankly, anything else, we'll be finalizing this agenda next Thursday. If there's something that you want to have some time to talk about in a session where you're not jammed up with other regular kind of agenda items, you know, we do this kind of before the lunch on Thursday, and before the regular meeting, or before the briefing, let us know and we kind of work through that. Let me ask Chris a question. Would it be possible, Chris, to give an update on sort of if there's been any more thinking on the sewer possibilities for the future, sewer expansion kind of issues? If additional dollars were to be in the state budget for that, for us, like where it might go? We've had some general discussion, I know we had a lot...
So you're talking about in relation to the...
Expansion, sewer expansion.
Yeah, the winter retreat that we had where Kyle, again, nothing, we have been on some calls ourselves. I know there's been some other things going on kind of behind the scenes between the city and the county and utilities. I don't know that I would be prepared to talk about that, but Kyle and, you know, maybe the team could be. I don't have any other updates besides what we talked about then, and we came back and then talked about, we probably need to engage some consulting work, but beyond that, there hasn't been any additional discussions.
Okay, yeah, well, I guess I'd like to maybe encourage we revisit where it is and what might we need to be doing to see that some of that work is, who maybe needs to be engaged to do some of that work. Yeah, I think the utility commission was, they were actively working on identification of what the logical sewer sheds would be if you were to expand that system. And so I will, we'll see if we're not ready for at least some preliminary information around that. Frankly, just showing where the, where sewer is currently provided and what, just sort of that information might be, might be helpful. But I know they've made some progress, I know they've been meeting on it, so we'll see. And I think the issue of development has to kind, if you just expand the sewer and are not sort of locking down some potential economic development, having a, you know, like a business, small business park or bigger or whatever, then other people will be buying it and going, I mean, we have to be doing two things simultaneously. That point was made in our winter workshop, which I thought was right on target, and that, that may require a different kind of developer consultant work to see that something is happening simultaneously as we, as we look at that, look at that. But, I mean, I'm optimistic we're going to get some money in that, and I just want us to be prepared to respond, forget it. Yeah, it sounds like, Chris, you don't have a whole lot else in your regular general planning update to do, because we really did that not too terribly long ago. Maybe we'll try to, we'll try to turn the focus of this one a little more on where you're going with that. And I'll certainly reach out to Kyle and Laura and Courtney and kind of see if we can pull together an update on kind of like where we are and where we need to go. Great. All right, good. Very good. Only other item I have is just closed session motion, whenever you're ready, Mr. Chairman. I'll make the motion. Okay, well, I need to ask more. I'll make the motion that you read. Got it, all right. I need to ask more to consider a motion to go into closed session. Just one matter to consult with the attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged pursuant to vengeance of North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A3. Since you know the business will come forward to the board at this meeting, following closed session, the meeting will be adjourned. Second motion?